Thank you, Scott. Well, good evening, everybody. It is 7:02 PM on August 5th, 2020. And before we call the August 5th meeting to order, we've got a few things we need to cover that are a prerequisite from a staff standpoint. We need to let everybody know that this meeting is being held electronically to comply with the Governor's Stay Safe Minnesota Order and to ensure the safety of all residents as well as our staff. All members of the City Council, staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. And before we begin, there's a few things we'd like to cover. For those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting tonight, whether it's on community comment or one of the two public hearing matters that we have. I think all of you know, excuse me, the city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through our council correspondence web form, voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important that you all know that all comments have been submitted, that have been submitted, have been received and read prior to the start of the meeting. You don't need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback, all correspondence is considered equally, regardless of the way in which it was submitted to the council. Tonight, as I mentioned earlier, there'll be two ways you can provide public comment via telephone. The first is the community comment portion of the agenda. You're allowed to speak about anything that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. The second is the public hearing portion of the agenda. We've got two public hearing matters tonight. We've got a site plan at 3451 Parkland Avenue for York Gardens Senior Living to discuss. And then there's some proposed zoning ordinance amendments regarding setbacks in the greater Southdale area, building materials requirements, requirement for affordable housing in commercial zoning districts, design experience guidelines and a number of required garage stalls for single-family residences. That'll all be part of the second public hearing. So if you want to call in for community comment or you want to provide testimony during a public hearing matter, here's the number that you need to call. It's 800-374-0221. 800-374-0221. And the conference ID is 7797847. 7797847. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our city manager, Scott Neal, will be timing you and he'll let you know if you go over the three-minute mark and then we'll need to have you wrap up your comments as quickly as possible. Remember, you do not need to call in tonight if you've already provided feedback. And also, don't repeat information that's already been presented. If we can avoid redundancy, that will make us more efficient. But certainly feel free, if you have new comments or information that you want to bring forward, feel free to call in and testify or participate in public comment. To make sure residents have an opportunity to participate, we will not act on the public hearing matters tonight. The public hearing matters will remain open until noon Wednesday, August 12th. You can leave a voicemail with your feedback or submit a comment online at BetterTogetherEdina.org. And either of those public hearing matters, as we said, will be kept open until noon on August 12th. And that'll be part of any motion made with respect to either of these matters. I ask in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this meeting online using different kinds of software and almost 20 people participating from different places. We certainly hope there won't be any issues, but if we do have some, we'll try to correct them as quickly as possible. So now I will call the August 5th virtual meeting of the Edina City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brendel?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
It is now time for the Pledge of Allegiance and I understand that only my microphone will be on and there should be an American flag on the screen as we're doing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening and I think Manager Neal has one item he wanted to move to the August 18th agenda. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have had a couple of council questions that we've not been able to have sufficient time to answer regarding the 2018 comp plan update. That's item number E on the Reports and Recommendations Agenda for tonight. And staff would request that council table that item until the August 18th council member, excuse me, August 18th council meeting. I did talk about that this afternoon with the Community Development Director. There is not a pending timeline, deadline that we have to hit with this item. So that would be our request to you.
Okay. All right, so there's no need to remove it from the agenda. We can just deal with it as it comes up in sequence.
Right.
All right, very good. So mark that, please, council members, that we'll want to be tabling 8E. All right, with that comment by Manager Neal, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Some of.
Second by Member Brendel. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to approving the meeting agenda.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brendel?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. The meeting agenda is approved, as shown. Now we're going to be moving on to community comment, but before we start, hearing for residents about something that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing, I want to give that phone number one more time. 800-374-0221. Conference ID 779-7847. 779-7847. The operator will ask for your name and street address and they'll put you in the queue to speak. You have them three minutes to speak, as I mentioned earlier, and Manager Neal will monitor the clock to keep you within that three-minute time parameter. So Director Benarott, do we have anybody that wants to inquire or comment to the council with regard to any particular matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or not scheduled for a future public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and members of the council. We do have a handful of people on the line, but no one yet has indicated a desire to speak. Those who are listening, please remember to press star 1 if you're interested in participating in community comment. That will get you in the queue to speak. With that, we have our first commenter. Tonight, our operator is Jürgen. Jürgen, would you please unmute the line of Mr. Andy Brown? And then, Andy, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Your line is open, please go ahead.
Thank you. Andy Brown, 5512 Park Place in Edina. I'm concerned about Arden Park and it's been two years now and we have no grass on that field. It's nothing but hard, compacted dirt and rock. And that doesn't do too well with my three-year-old's knees. And on top of that, what makes it worse is I have a neighbor in my backyard that for many years has pumped her water waste into my backyard. And I have a list for my son as well. We have a retaining area for all that water so it doesn't flood the main house. And so he does rules that it has in the code regarding some pump water going and being pumped into other people's properties. And I'm very, are not being finished. In fact, now there's snow plow, snow orange fences. It looks more like a MinDOT base than it does in Edina Park. So I'm really just concerned about that. And along with that, I don't have fiber service to the house. I paid a lot of money for street reconstruction and that wasn't part of it. My taxes have gone up and the fire service response has gone down. So now we don't have a third fire station in north and northeast Edina, like Ridgefield, which has both fiber and two fire stations. So, and then also the mayor mentioned in the pre-meeting that Hopkins, Minnetaka, Stanley's Park, they're getting a billion dollars in federal investment and we don't have rail service here. And we could, but instead we're going to talk about building more parking ramps at local taxpayer expense. So very disappointed and hope somebody did get addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I think we'll talk about Arden Park a little bit. We've had other inquiries about that and I think Manager Neal can address that issue as soon as we figure, finish with community comment.
Our next speaker tonight is Niles Bisping. Jürgen, would you please unmute the line of Mr. Bisping? And then please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Niles Bisping, your line is open. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Perfect. My name is Niles Bisping and I live at 5101 Abercrombie Drive. I want to take this opportunity to state that I remain opposed to the proposal to take away our parks at the intersection of Dugan Plaza and Abercrombie Drive. Very many of us who live in Dugan Heights are offended by the way that that proposal was put forward. In the future, we would appreciate it if the planners would directly engage those of us who live in our community, who are most directly affected by such plans. In the future, your plans need much wider community out there and it would foster greater cooperation. And that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bisping. Appreciate it.
Counsel, I do still have a number of people on the line, but no one has indicated a desire to speak just yet. As a reminder to those listening, please press star 1 if you'd like to make a comment at this time. Otherwise, counsel, I would recommend that we wait just a minute or two in case someone else dials in new. With that, I do have a couple of people queued up. The first is Peter Sylphsis. Jürgen, would you please unmute the line of Mr. Peter Sylphsis? And then, Peter, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Good evening, everybody.
Please go ahead.
My name, my name is Peter Tylepis. I live at 5101 Abercrombie Drive, just adjacent to the little park that has been discussed for affordable housing. I'd like to begin by thanking you, Mr. Mayor, and the council members for your comments at the previous meeting. It was very kind of you. You know, while we're all imperfect, it's clear that you're all doing your best to move Edina down the road in this next decade that we live in, in these interesting times. A few points of clarity. One, in your comments, Mr. Mayor, you wondered why reapproach the city in 2008. We were in a recession at the time and very simply I took a shot to buy the land. But I was most heartened by the same response that I received back in 2004, that it would never be sold nor developed as it's a park, much like the Dorsey opinion the city's outside council stated in 1990 when a gentleman asked the city to consider a home there. To echo Niles' comments, myself and the majority of the people that I've spoken to in the neighborhood, upwards of over 30 homes thus far, are very opposed to this development of affordable housing since it was designated as a park by the state through restrictive covenants when they deeded it to the city in 1963. It's been used as a park for over 57 years through the generations. And while times and needs have changed through the decades, I know we can do better, but I'd like to propose some alternative outlooks as to perhaps how we can. One, this project is not congruent with the city's creed of Edina's neighborhoods first. Next, I think the way the plan is structured, it would be conveyed to the Edina Housing Foundation in perpetuity to assure affordable housing and the participants, the people that would live there, would only participate in equity on the building itself. So one of the introspective questions that I have, considering the consultants have been talking about a population increase of Edina of 16% to 17% this decade, much like the last one, why would we push all our chips in to eliminate green space on a piece of land that's been used as a park for 57 years as opposed to concentrating on building beautiful three, four-story townhomes where the city can own that land in a trust to the EHF and the people participate in that same equity in their apartments and buildings only? And they can still receive that forgivable secondary mortgage up to $60,000.
30 seconds.
There's so much more bang for the buck. Thank you. There's so much more bang for the buck at 7200 France Avenue or even Eden Avenue area where you can build numerous townhomes and help so many more people in a tighter proximity to transportation and all their necessities. Thank you for listening. I hope that we continue to table this and we look forward to communicating as a community with the city council and any staff members that wish to have a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylphis.
Before we introduce our next community commenter, I would just like to remind those on the call that if you would like to make a comment, you need to press star 1 to get in the queue. Again, that's star 1 to get in the queue. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Wade Thoman. Jürgen, will you please unmute the line of Mr. Wade Thoman? And Wade, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Wade Thoman, your line is now open. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Wade Thoman, 5201 Damon's Drive. A lot at Dugan Plaza in Damon's, actually Abercrombie as well, they all meet there, has been a Brookview Heights development green space, or as some called it, a park, for over 50 years. This environmental green space impacts the whole Brookview Heights development and area values. When the land was given to the city of Edina by the state of Minnesota in 1963, the intent at that time was that it be used as a permanent park. They have changed the law in 2010, but the intent and historical use of this land has been park green space. If you believe in making neighborhoods and residents first, you will protect their neighborhood green spaces and setback standards. Why would people want to own a single-family home in Edina in the future if the city does not want to protect current green space, setback standards and homeowners' values in neighborhoods? That is why everyone who owns property in Edina should care about this proposal. There are plenty of nearby communities throwing high-quality standards out the door by changing codes. But that is not what Edina was built on. Edina became a great suburb, not an urban city as some urban planners would like to make it. By, Edina became a great suburb by increasing standards, not decreasing them. Edina has a long history of making quality neighborhoods great, evidenced by how they preserved this property as green space along with many others for years. I think people have found environmental green space even more important during COVID. Please don't decrease our local property standards moving forward. The value of all of our homes rely on 19, our excellent setback standards and quality green space, which all of the previous leaders have protected in Edina. Using the green space on Dugan Plaza for this project would strip a wonderful community asset away from the neighborhood.
10 seconds.
There are many, many other options to affordable housing without breaking up the infrastructure of neighborhoods. Taking a public asset like this will absolutely affect property values and the character of the neighborhood. This is not in keeping with neighborhoods first and is not keeping residents first. To move forward with this project and not only change our Edina neighborhood's green spaces and set back quality standards,
10 seconds.
but I believe it is local government overreach in an effort to accomplish a goal that can be accomplished in so many other ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thoman.
Caller this evening is Elvira Karwowski. Jürgen, will you please unmute Elvira's line? And then please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Elvira, your line is now open.
Elvira, yes.
Please go ahead. Elvira, sorry.
Yes, hi. I, my name is Elvira Karwowski and I'm one of the member, the closest neighbor of the little piece of land, Dugan and Damon's. And my address is 5101 Damon's Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Karwowski.
Okay.
Getting some feedback. Looks, sounds like it's from, I don't know where it's from.
Yes, yes, it was, it was recorded part of it.
Yeah.
Getting a good example of how delayed that broadcast is because you're hearing us like five seconds ago.
Okay. So are you suggesting, Ms. Benarott, that we're, do something on her end as she closes up?
You should just turn down her broadcast.
Maybe I will repeat. Yes, yes, okay. I will repeat.
All right.
My name is Elvira Karwowski.
Ms. Karwowski, turn down your volume on the other, on whatever you're listening to.
Okay, I will try to mute it. Let's see. Okay. Are you, okay, I'm repeating now, I hope.
Yes, go ahead. We'll start your three-minute clock now.
Okay. Elvira Karwowski again.
Go ahead, Ms. Karwowski.
Yes, Elvira Karwowski again. I'm at the 5101 Damon's Drive, one of the four members and neighbors who received the original letter from Affordable Housing. And I kind of questioned that, why only four of us receive those letters? Because this little plaza, this little piece of land is, it belongs basically to the whole neighborhood. I'm in this neighborhood since end of 1986, which means over 30-some years. And I've seen generation of children playing on that plaza. It's a little park. I, I think building something on it would not be the great idea for the neighborhood because it's a picnic area, it's a park area, it's a play area for kids. It's gathering place for the neighbors, including the winter and freezing winter weather. And I think I've seen people like playing golf or practicing the golf. I've seen teenager playing on that. And please, please don't take that piece of land from the neighborhood. And don't overbuild anything on that, on that piece of land. That's, that's what I really want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karwowski.
Thank you.
Counsel members, I do not have anyone else on the line at this point or indicating a desire to speak to the council. I would recommend, as there is a delay in the broadcast, that you wait for a minute or so in case someone else chooses to call in at this point.
Very good. Are we safe to move on, Ms. Benarott?
So, sir.
Did you say yes, sir?
She did.
Thank you. All right, so following community comment, we have the city manager's response to community comment that was made at the prior meeting, which was about two weeks ago. And, and Manager Neal, anything that you wish to respond on from the prior meeting?
Yes, Your Honor. We had three community commenters at our July 21st meeting. One, excuse me, two of those comments were about the Dugans Plaza proposal. And because that item was on the agenda that evening, we didn't really get too far into the comments. But fortunately, two of tonight's commenters were the same folks who wanted to talk about it last time and so they had a chance to share their comments with the council in the public space, as it is. The other comment was offered about wanting a status report on the identification of sites for a proposed fire station 3. At this stage, I can tell you that staff have taken that issue up. We are looking at possible locations in the northeast or near the northeast quadrant of the city, but we don't have any update to share with the council yet on possible sites. That is something that is part of our work plan and we are working on it right now.
All right, very good. Any supplemental council member comments? Okay, move on. Thank you, Manager Neal. Next is the consent agenda and the adoption of all or a portion of the consent agenda. adoption of, uh, all or a portion of the consent agenda. I've had, uh, at least one council member say that he'd like to pull, um, it is 6F and, and 6H. Is there any other council member who wishes to pull an item? Member, Councilmember Brindle?
Yes, items E and G.
E and G. Okay, member Fisher?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 6A.
Okay, we've got 6A, E, F, G, H for removal from the consent agenda. Member Anderson. Member Anderson, you're on mute.
Sorry. Um, items E and G, and I think they've already been brought up.
E and G, yep, correct.
Thank you.
And then, uh, Manager Neil?
Your Honor, I, I think we may need to clarify which, which items, uh, I want to make sure we're all, we're all working off the same agenda. So, the, the items about E, E and F, I think the items that people asked to pull were the traffic safety report and, uh, and the four-way stop, right? Was there another item in there that?
And also E.
E was the, uh, approval of the interfund loan for Grandview 2 Tiftis?
That, that's why, that's why I'm raising this question because that item is, is, uh, was a typographic error, and that shouldn't have been on this agenda. So, uh,
It's not, it's not on the agenda I'm looking at.
That's, that's why I'm raising it. So I-
Not what I'm looking at. Apparently it's on Member Brindle's, too.
It, may I explain? It was removed from the online agenda, but I inadvertently, um, did not remove it from the paper agenda that you received today.
Okay, so let's make sure we got this right. So I'm looking at an agenda. So, Member Fisher, you want to remove, you want to remove the minutes, uh, that for July 21?
Correct.
All right. And then, Member Brindle?
I want to remove the traffic safety report.
Yes.
And I want to remove the all-way stop at Bearden 57th.
Okay. So you did not want to remove the, uh, Tracy Avenue Water Wetland Maintenance Agreement?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Clerk Allison, would you give me the designations on those? It's A, and then what is it, uh?
Are, are you referring to the items to be pulled?
It's A, E, and G. A, E, and G.
A, E, and G.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does anyone wish to pull any items other than A, E, and G? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of A, E, and G?
So moved.
Member Fisher moves. Member Anderson seconds. Further discussion? Uh, roll call, please, with respect to approval of the consent agenda with the removal of items A, E, and G.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havlin?
Aye.
Uh, the consent agenda as described with the removal of items A, E, and G is approved. Let's go then to, uh, Member Fisher's concerns about the minutes of the work session of July 21, 2020. Member Fisher?
So, Mr. Mayor, it's not the work session, it's the actual, uh, council meeting minutes.
The regular, all right.
The regular meeting, it's item 6I, which was, uh, pulled from the consent agenda. It's the Roslin Park Stormwater Filtration Project. And, uh, I think, uh, it's inadvertently labeled as having made a motion and approved the project. And that is, uh, not what we did. What we did is we pulled the discussion. It was essentially a staff memo. There was no recommend, you know, recommended approval required that evening. It was just to give us notice that, uh, a plan was going to be coming forth that we would need to approve. So I pulled it for discussion purposes only. Um, and so what we did is essentially, um, I think accepted the staff memo is really what we did. I just didn't want that to be misconstrued as us having approved the actual project at that meeting. And then just to further, the, the, the discussion was that staff would meet with any concerned upstream neighbors that wanted to talk about the project or how it might impact them and kind of get that information before it comes to us at a future meeting.
So do you want to make a language, uh, change on that particular item?
Yeah, I would say the motion should read that, um,
Identify that, identify the paragraph, too, would you please?
Gosh, I don't have it up in front of me right here.
I think I could find it, um.
6I.
Yeah, it's 6I, and it's-
And, and near the bottom of page two.
Are you seeing it, um, Clerk Allison?
Yeah. It says, "Member Fisher made a motion seconded by Member Brindle to approve Roslin Park Stormwater Filtration Vault Project as presented."
Right. And, and I would say it should say, "Member Fisher made a motion to accept the staff memo with council approval to happen at a future council meeting."
All right. Do you want to make that change by motion, Manager Neil, or can we just make that correction? You're on mute, Manager Neil.
I think we propose it by motion, and then you adopt it as an amended minutes.
All right. Let's do it that way. All right. You heard Member Fisher's motion. Is there a second to his motion to amend the minutes?
Second.
All right. Let's approve the amendment first. Uh, any further discussion with respect to the lang, proposed language change? All those, uh, so we're going to vote on now on the proposed language change, and then we'll go back and vote on the amended minute. All right. Um, Clerk Allison?
Member Anderson?
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havlin?
Aye. Motion to amend, uh, the, uh, language at the bottom of page two, uh, is approved. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, adopt the amended minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion second to adopt the minutes as amended, the minutes of the meeting of, uh, July 21, 2020 of the regular city council meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call with respect to that adoption of those amended minutes. Clerk Allison?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havlin?
Aye. amended, the meeting minutes are approved. And then let's go to the, um, item E, which is the traffic safety report. And, Member Brindle, you wanted that pulled. I think Member Anderson did, uh, I did as well, and I think Member Fisher did as well. So let's talk about that. Is it, um, item A2 in that?
It is.
Here. Yep. Go ahead. Brindle, why don't you lead us off?
All right. So I received a letter from Danny Schelsted, Edina resident. Danny Schelsted, who is, um, um, I, I have the highest respect for him. He was on the Minneapolis City Council for 22 years, and he's a retired brigadier general in the Air Force. And he has a concern about the recommended, um, action for the, uh, for the trail, the, the bike and, the multi-use path that's in that area, which is eight feet wide. And, um, so we want to make sure that there is signage to alert cyclists to slow down. We want to encourage, we want to make sure there's signage that it encourages cyclists to, um, to announce their approach. Because what's happening is, um, and according to Denny, particularly adult cyclists are moving very quickly there. And, um, and this is an eight-foot path that is bidirectional. And, um, and so pedestrians on this path are, um, feel vulnerable and feel like they're in danger when some of the cyclists are moving quickly. So the part of the action that is listed in the traffic safety report that I would like to strike is the yellow line, the center yellow line. This is an eight-foot path, which means it's two four-foot lanes. If there's a yellow line, it means that if you're walking south on that path and the cyclist is coming behind you, you and the cyclist have to share that four feet because there's a yellow line going down the middle. So, um, so by striking the yellow line, um, it would allow the cyclist to veer around, and, uh, and it would allow the, the pedestrians to veer around if needed. But the, the yellow line, um, leaving four foot, uh, four feet within each lane is not enough room to get out of each other's way. So, um, I have no problem with the other actions suggested for, for this section. Um, would like to make sure that the signing, that the signage does what it needs to do, and that is alert people to slow down if they're on a cycle, and, um, and then to remove that yellow stripe.
All right. Um, Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I would support, um, all of Member Brindle's comments. I was over there, uh, took a good look on Monday, and I think that the, the difficulty is not simply the eight-foot path, which is not unusual. Um, it's just that there is a, there's a, a very high hedge row, uh, on the east side of that path. It's, and on the west side is a pond.
Right.
And so I can see how a bicyclist coming through there, you know, everybody likes to ride fast. So I can see how somebody comes through there, and if you're not totally aware of the potential traffic, it's very difficult for especially a pedestrian to be able to move to the side anywhere there.
Right.
So it, it just, there's no place to go. Um, so I think that the signage is a really good idea. Um, I see these yellow, I see yellow striping in various park settings, but in all of those, there's room, there's room to move off. And, and there, there's none here. Um, so I think that the intent is good. Um, but if it tends to focus high-speed traffic into one small area, I think the, the possibility for a problem is enhanced. So I guess if, if, if nothing else, maybe we could at least delay the striping, see if the signage works. And if the signage is effective, no real reason to stripe, if we think down the road the striping actually would help, um, I guess that's something to consider down the road. But for right now, uh, I think the signage, uh, will probably do the job.
All right, thank you. Member Fisher?
Um, well, I think a lot of it's been said here. I, I think when I look at this, and I've used this path fairly often, um, what's unique about, and I think staff actually has the right recommendation, um, but I agree that we should hold off on the striping and see if we can make the effective change without it. And the reason for that is when you stripe it, it sort of implies, like many of the other bike trails, that you each have a lane and just, you know, you're a biker, just do your thing. And I don't think that's the message we're trying to send. This is a short segment, which is really, I think of it like a woo-nur. If we're, you know, we talk about woo-nurfs where we have cars sharing with pedestrians. We would never paint a stripe down the middle of a woo-nurf because it sends a different sort of message about how cars should behave. And this is no different. We don't want bicyclists to stay in their lane and go fast. We want them to understand that pedestrians come first in this section. And so it's not, you know, while it is a linkage to other bike amenities, that this, this section is about pedestrians. So I love the idea of the signage. I'd want to just wait on the striping.
Thank you. Director Milner, did you have any comment you wanted to make on this matter?
Nope. I think we can revisit the striping as a later date, if that's what we need to do. So we would, we would take the council's recommendation.
All right. You, you were sitting there in such an alert manner, I thought maybe you were poised to weigh in on this thing, that, uh,
We'll wait for another time to speak to the transportation reasons for that stripe. But let's try the signs first.
All right. Member Staunton, any, uh, supplemental thoughts? All right. I'm with you. I, I agree with everything my colleagues have said, I think, and they said it well. Um, let's take this one step at a time. The one thing I'm concerned about, if you look at the bold, uh, recommendation, it says updating signage to better indicate the shared use nature of the path. Uh, I like what Member Fisher said, and, and that's, uh, in this section, pedestrians, uh, should have a priority. So what do you say, beware of pedestrians or, or, you know, caution, uh, I don't know what you do there in terms of enhancing the safety for pedestrians, but I think we ought to do something more than just saying this is a shared pathway. I don't think that's going to put bicyclists on sufficient notice that they need to be careful through this segment of the pathway. So I'll, I'll leave that to your devices. So, Member Brindle, uh, would you, um, move to amend the, um, traffic safety report of June 30, 2020, uh, section A2, uh, by deleting, uh, the installation of the center line striping and have that recommendation deal with updating signage to better indicate the shared use nature of the path only?
So moved.
There a second? Thank you. With respect to the, uh, amended language only, we'll come back and deal with the report in its amended fashion. Although, uh, see, any other comment with respect to the proposed amendment?
Uh, just a quick one, just a, just a quick one, and that is, um, just reflecting on the spirit of the state statute, uh, that faster vehicles, faster traffic yields to slower traffic, so bikes should yield to pedestrians. And so, um, so hopefully that will, um, will get a little more respect from the bikes, bicyclists for the pedestrians.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Um, all those in favor of amending, and see, we'll go to roll call on this, but the, the recommendation is to amend, uh, staff recommendation A2 to read, "Staff recommends updating signage to better indicate the shared use nature of the path only." Uh, no further discussion being heard. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison, with respect to the-
Well, I, I would, I would add to that, that the signage we discussed this evening in referring to this goes beyond signage as a shared use path. It's a shared use path. It needs to, it needs to tell bikes to slow down and to, um, what's my other note?
You want to say that maximizes the protection for pedestrians?
Right, yeah. And-
You're essentially saying bicycles yield to pedestrians.
Yeah, bicycles yield to pedestrians, and the etiquette is that they announce their approach.
Hard to put that on a sign, but-
Yep.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll-
Oh, we'll see.
-add a practice, uh, uh, part of the process of the practice itself or the notification, but that bicyclist will yield to pedestrians, we'll make that part of the motion so that it reads, "Staff recommends updating, uh, signage to better indicate the shared use nature of the path" with an emphasis that bicyclists yield to pedestrians.
That's, that's great. That's great. I'm happy with that.
All right. Um, Ms. Allison, would you, uh, call roll on that particular amendment?
Absolutely. May I ask who, uh, seconded the motion first? Was it Member Anderson?
Member Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, roll call now. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havlin?
Aye. The amendment is approved, and now is there a motion to approve the amended traffic safety report of June 30, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Member Fisher, second? Is that it?
Yep.
All right. Member Brindle makes the motion. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havlin?
Aye. The amended traffic safety report for June 30, 2020 is approved. And the next item then is, uh, item G, uh, 6G, and that is the, uh, proposed, uh, there was a petition for an all-way stop control at Beard Avenue and West 57th Street. Uh, and, um, we had a lot of neighbors over there petition for that four-way stop. It's already controlled in two directions. Um, wanted to make it a four-way, and we got a staff recommendation that, uh, uh, that suggests that we not do that. And so I think, um, several council members have a concern about that and want to have a discussion about it. And, um, Member Anderson, did you lead that? Did you ask for that one to be removed as well? I think you did.
Yes, um, along with others, I believe, but I'm happy to kick it off.
Yeah, I was thinking you could start it out.
Yeah, thanks. Um, everybody, I think, saw the petition, um, and there have been several emails, uh, since, uh, the petition was submitted. Um, so, uh, out of curiosity, I went over on Monday afternoon, uh, did a little stakeout, spent some time. Um, and the, uh, the traffic that I'm noticing, um, I think there's a lot of factors there. Number one, 58th Street's closed, and so there's going to be some additional movement through there. Uh, so that the 57th, I think, becomes a little busier. Um, additionally, I just noticed an awful lot of young kids out and about. Chalan Park is right down the street. But what comes with that, the, the grade from Chalan Park down to 57th and Beard is significant. Uh, if you're a bike rider, that's fun. You, you like to coast down that grade. Now, I, I read the, the traffic re-
Now, I, I read the, the traffic report, and I wouldn't argue with it. I, I, I think that it's carefully done. And, um, there isn't all that much traffic that comes through there. The issue is, I, the, the, the possibility of incidents. Now, I noted that, um, there were no reported accidents, uh, in the last year or so. However, um, anecdotally, and I got this from the neighbor on the corner, uh, who was the first to respond to a, an accident there with a kid that, coming down from Chalan Park, this more or less blew through the stop sign, came in contact with a van, uh, going, uh, going west.
West.
West. And so, um, now, it, it wasn't reported because the child wasn't injured, the bike was. The, the van driver was kinda shaken up and that, you know, so I think that heightens concern. Um, the fact that this has come forward so often tells you that the neighborhood is active. Uh, I was told there were some 50 kids, uh, that are directly in that immediate area, so a, a little more activity than might be usual in other areas. Um, the thing that really got my attention in reading through it is I noticed that the Transportation Commission had a vote of, uh, six to one to install the four-way stop. That vote was, uh, was made on 7/16 after some discussion. So all in all, I think that...
I can take that one in the beginning.
I'm sorry?
There is a, uh, there's a process that you go through with these developments, or at least we do.
Mr. Merkley, Mr. Merkley, set yourself on mute.
First, let's see how many units function.
All right.
Okay. Uh, I don't know where the disturbance came in, but uh, the traffic, uh, the Traffic Commission vote on 7/16 was six to one to install a four-way stop. And I think that that was, uh, in recognition of earlier requests and the, uh, the increase in traffic there. So, you know, I, I, again, I, I know that technically, um, it would not qualify for a four-way stop. However, we do have latitude in, in doing that. Sometimes I think when it makes, uh, good sense that it's possible to do it. If nothing else, if we install the four-way stop on, on at least a temporary basis, a period of a year, two years, to really evaluate and see when 58th Street reopens, see when the construction on France Avenue slows down, we could reevaluate, uh, uh, over the course of that time and see. Although, I think that once the signs are in, might be wise to leave them in. The Traffic Commission thinks so, and, uh, so do I. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, see, Member Brindle, Member Fisher, I think, uh, also wanted this one removed. Member Fisher, do you wanna go next?
Sure. Um, so I also, um, my wife and I went out and visited the intersection, approached it from every direction, and, you know, the first, first sort of thought we had was, um, stop signs are on the wrong street. Uh, just the way it feels like traffic moves there. Um, what was more interesting is when you approached it on Beard in both directions, um, the topography kind of creates an illusion that 57th isn't actually there. It's a kind of a remarkable little illusion. Um, I, I think, you know, for sure, the staff, you know, are doing, um, you know, they're following all of the guidance. They're doing all of the right thing from the sort of the engineering perspective on this. What catches my attention is when, um, the local experts, which are neighbors, are so persistent over so many years, there's something going on there. Makes me really wanna look for what are they seeing that the data's not showing us? And I think those are some of the things they're seeing, frankly. And, uh, as, uh, Councilmember Anderson alluded to, the fact that the Transportation Commission also, um, voted pretty overwhelmingly to put the, the stop sign in makes me feel like, um, this is one of those instances where we probably need to look past the data and look at the circumstances there and, uh, and make that change. And, and I say that with the utmost concern in, you know, popping stop signs all over the community based on petitions, right? That is not what I'm saying here. Uh, but I think there are those, uh, extenuating circumstances where we really need to kinda look at that, uh, the kind of the local perspective there.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. Uh, so this has come up numerous times uh, as I have been on council. And, um, early in my time, I, um, I did some work and looked around the country at how neighborhoods deal with parks in their neighborhood parks. And I also looked at Toronto, Canada, so several cities in the United States plus Toronto. And, uh, what I found was that in some of the cities, and I've talked about this at the dais several times, and someday, uh, I'd like to see something like this happen where, um, and this, this exists in Toronto, I believe, where, uh, and maybe Hartford, Connecticut. But there is, um, within the transportation plan, there's something called a park overlay district. So when there's a neighborhood park, then you can create a, a park overlay, and you can put into that park overlay the things that are needed to make that park safely accessible. It's lower speed limits, it's yield signs, it's crosswalks. It's things that make that park accessible. And, um, and, and in some cases, it's delineated, um, lane on the street for a bike or a sidewalk. And in this neighborhood, I would imagine it would be a sidewalk, um, if there isn't one. But in looking at the number of times that we have been approached about this by neighbors who live there, uh, and as I look at the petition, there's quite a number of them who I have known, uh, either, either recently or for a number of years. Uh, I just don't see the downside with putting a four-way stop. Um, you're gonna have a four-way stop at 57th and maybe Beard, and you're gonna have a four, which is right at Chalan Park. And then you'd have a four-way stop at 57th and Beard. So, sorry, 57th and, what is it going east? Abbott? No, yeah, 57th and, 57th and Beard, 57th. Anyway, you would end up with four-way stops just a block apart. That doesn't bother me. Doesn't bother me in the least because there's a park there. Um, the, I think the most glaring problem that they identify here is the rolling stops. And, and I see rolling stops at four-way stops all over the city where, um, if the driver even approaches the brake, it's maybe a little bit of a slowdown. But they're literally running stop signs. And so it, it'd be really nice to, um, to be able to monitor that a little bit closer. Uh, I know that the officers have a lot of priorities. Um, but if, if some of the traffic officers, instead of maybe working the highways so much, maybe they could work neighborhood streets. And especially now with 58th Street being closed. Um, it may indeed be that 57th Street is less safe now because of the condition, uh, in the neighborhood. So, um, the, the 85, the 85th percentile speed appears to be the posted speed or less. However, the traffic report does show that there are people going 40 miles an hour on 57th Street. So in looking at, I would also look at 57th Street, there are completely uncontrolled intersections. So I think that Member Fisher's, um, observation is, is worth really looking at. Where there are completely uncontrolled intersections, um, look at the basket weave approach to stop signs. Where on one block, the stop signs are on the East-West Street. The next block, the, the stop signs are on the North-South Street. So you're continually getting control at every corner. But where there is the park and, um, and on both corners where the park is accessible, I don't see any problem with putting a four-way stop there.
Thank you. Um, Member Staunton, any comment? Is this, okay, thank you.
Uh, I concur with my colleagues again. Um, it seems like, uh, we've gotten to the point with, uh, people and automobiles, uh, that there's a significant education to do with respect to the no-stop rolling-stop notion. Uh, we're getting these same comments from folks over in the 57th and 58th and Kellogg neighborhood.
Right.
Close to, uh, close to Pamela Park. And what I'm being told over there is that they don't stop at all. And there are kids all over the place. And, and we know from National Night Out that, uh, many of us, uh, tend to stop at Chalan Park. There are more and more young families over there all the time. And, uh, kids are going down to use that park, which has been, uh, improved over time. And, uh, I just think we should, we should, we should do this. We, we... You, you can't drive through Country Club, for example, without hitting a stop sign, uh, you know, every block, one way, one direction or the other. Uh, speaking to Member Brindle's basket weave issue. This, uh, park overlay district idea that, uh, Member Brindle has talked about as long as I've known her, I think is an important thing to consider that and I've talked about this with some of the neighbors over in the 58th, 57th and Kellogg neighborhood, is that we ought to be looking at within a certain radius of every park, uh, the creation of, of as much safety for pedestrians and especially kids as we can, uh, as we can, as we can create. Um, especially during COVID. We see more people out walking, biking, kids are out or moving around. Uh, it's really wonderful to see everybody getting exercise, and I think we need to be really mindful of the pedestrian and especially who might not be as savvy yet as they, they, we would like them to be and try to protect them as best we can. So, uh, I, I'm in favor of, uh, putting those stop signs in over there, making that a four-way stop and seeing what happens. We did this on a temporary basis. I think it was over a few years ago over on 56th and, uh, maybe it was, um, uh, Woodland Circle over there. Uh, and, and the, the stop sign was eventually removed, as I recall, but nonetheless, we had a, a nice long trial period of a, a year or more where people at least got to see how it worked. And so I think with the combination of a four-way stop and then maybe some, uh, educational component for us, uh, with respect to telling our citizens, you need to start stopping at stop signs. Uh, don't just be blowing through them or bumping through them. Be mindful of the safety of others, especially when people are out and about so much in the summertime. So I'm, I'm in favor of this as well. So, um, is there a motion to, uh, approve the installation of all-way stop control at Beard Avenue and West 57th Street?
So moved.
We get a motion second by, uh, Member Brindle, Member Anderson. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Director Allison, roll call please.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Took me a second there to turn my mic on. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The motion to, uh, approve, uh, all-way stop control at Beard Avenue and West 57th Streets approved. And next, we're gonna move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Uh, thanks for your good input on those items that were pulled, uh, from the consent agenda. And so the first matter we have on public hearing tonight is, uh, Resolution 2020-81, proposed Resolution 2020-81, which is a site plan review for 3451 Parkland Avenue. This is, uh, part of the York Gardens Senior Living Complex, and our Community Development Director, Kerry Teague, has this matter. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, back in 2009, the City Council approved a rezoning of this property to, in order to build the 76-unit four-story building. This is located in the northwest corner here. It's attached to the existing co-op at 7500, where there's 337 units. What the proposal here is this evening is to remodel a therapy room within the existing four-story building and add three, three, uh, bedrooms. So there's no, no, uh, impact to the site itself, and there's no exterior alteration to the building at all. Uh, with these three rooms, there's no staff increase. There's basically, there's no exterior change um, with it. The maximum density on this site, uh, based on the current zoning is 44 units an acre. Uh, with the addition of the three units, there would be 29 units per acre, so well within the density. Um, the current parking regulations, this site, we had a long conversation about parking regulations. This site is overparked. They have more parking than they need based on our code. So there shouldn't be any impacts, uh, there as well. Planning Commission reviewed this and did recommend approval on a six to zero vote. So with that, I will stop there. Stafford and the Planning Commission are recommending approval here of the, uh, site plan um, that's proposed. So we would ask that you, uh, keep the public hearing open until August 12th at noon, and then continue action to August 18th. And I will stop there and answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Director Teague regarding the York Gardens Senior Living proposal?
I do.
Yes, Member Brindle?
Thank you. Uh, Director Teague, in, in taking the therapy and office space and, um, repurposing it, are they gonna move that space to somewhere else in the facility, or is that space underutilized and they're just not using it and they'd rather have three more units?
Yeah, it sounds like it is underutilized. Uh, Susan Farr is on the call this evening, and she could answer any detailed questions about the operation within.
Okay. I'm, I'm just curious, what makes that space available?
We wait until we have the, uh, applicant make their presentation, and so hold that question for Ms. Farr.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Director Teague that would be staff-related? All right. Director Teague, did you indicate to Ms. Farr, uh, how much time she'd have?
Uh, at Planning Commission, uh, she didn't take more than five minutes, just a quick introduction, and, um, could maybe answer, uh, Councilmember Brindle's question.
All right. Uh, Ms. Farr, nice to have you with us this evening. We haven't seen you for a few years.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. I'm supposed to announce that I'm user number two. So my name is Susan Farr, and I am with Ebenezer, part of Fairview. And, um, thank you very much for your time this evening. When we built the building next door, 7500 York residents thought that they would like to just walk through the link and use our therapy area. So in the Survey Monkey focus group, they told us they would really enjoy using that. It is greatly underused um, to the point where we shut it down probably about nine months ago. And of course, with COVID, the seniors have more time on their hands, and they said it sure would be nice to have some new neighbors. So it, it is, it has been, um, shut down because it did not get used. Maybe 10% out of 100, the therapy area and office area was used. Did that answer your question, Council Brindle?
It did. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Ms. Farr, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think they would, well, they would really enjoy the rooms, and especially with having so many people next door as they age. It would be nice to have those three, um, units there for the assisted living and so that we don't have to tell people to go to other areas. So again, I appreciate your time and thank you very much for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Farr, I think Member Anderson may have a question for you.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Farr, are you still with us?
Yep, I am.
Oh, good. Thank you. Um, so I, I just, just a definition question. Um, now, I think that the three units that you're gaining there are designated as enhanced care units?
Yes, assisted living.
Oh, they're assisted living units?
Yes, they are. Correct.
Okay, that, that was, that's my question. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing matter, and we'll now hear from residents. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. We're now going to hear from residents who would like to provide testimony in this public hearing matter. Remember, the number is 800-374, 800-374-0221. Your conference ID number is 7797847, 7797847. You'll get an operator, they'll ask for your name and address, and put you in the queue to speak. And you'll be given three minutes to speak. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody on the line?
We do have one caller on the line right now, but that person has not indicated a desire to provide testimony in this matter. As a reminder, callers, please press star one on your telephone keypad to get in the queue to speak. Otherwise, council, I would recommend you wait for a minute or so, as there is a delay in the broadcast. If my memory is correct, we did not have anyone testify at the Planning Commission meeting either. So let's hold for just a minute, please.
Yes, we'll do that. And just a reminder to folks who might be listening or eventually watching, we'll continue to take testimony in this matter via the voice mailbox system, or bettertogetheredina.org until noon on August 12th. Anyone in the queue yet? Director Bennerott?
I think it's safe for you to move on.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to, let's do it this way. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on August 12th and continue the action on this item to the August 18th City Council meeting? So. Motion by Member Fisher, second by, oh, Member Staunton, okay. Second by Member Brindle. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the motion to close the public hearing at noon, August 12th, and continue the action on the item to the August 18th City Council meeting.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye. And Director Teague, if you take a look at that resolution between now and the 18th of August, under the Section 2, Findings and Approval Section 2.012, it says the additional unit, singular, will not alter the site or existing building elevation. So I think you want to make that plural and use the fact they want to put in three units.
I will do that.
Mr. Smith, you're not going to be needed tonight. Mr. Smith, the matter that you are here for is going to be continued until the 18th of August.
All right. Okay, well, thank you.
So unless you care to listen to more of our, our public hearing matters, you're welcome to depart.
Well, you know, I always did enjoy just sitting in the audience for a while, even when our presentations were over.
Yeah.
But I have corn on the cob on the stove this evening, so.
Don't let it go over three minutes, then.
All right. See you, what was the date again?
On the 18th.
We'll see you then.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right, so yeah, Director Teague, did you get that?
Yep, yep.
That changes to plural? Okay. We've got one other public hearing matter this evening, and that is Proposed Ordinance 2020-10. Director Teague has this matter as well. It's a potpourri of matters involving setbacks in the greater South Hill area, building material requirements, affordable housing-related issues, design experience guidelines, and total garage stalls being required. Director Teague, do you want to amend this matter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll try to simplify it, as it is quite lengthy code, but I'll try to simplify it a little bit. So this is, these are work plan items that the Planning Commission has been working on over the past several months. They really can be divided into three categories. The first is codifying the design experience guidelines, or at least some of the more basic regulations within those design experience guidelines. The second is codifying the affordable housing policy as it relates to property that's zoned for commercial development, so just the planned commercial development districts. And then the third is a reduction in the number of required garage stalls for single-family homes and duplexes. So the first sections, 1 through 10, again, relate to those design experience guidelines. What this ordinance does is it requires a 30-foot setback on all streets, with the exception of France and York, where there would be a 50-foot setback. So again, that's consistent with the design experience guidelines. And then for buildings itself, the code requires, or would require, 75% transparency of the first-level facade that faces public streets and the public realm. The first 60 feet of vertical height on a building that's taller than 60 feet, the building material needs to be brick and stone. The code would also require a 20-foot first-floor height for all commercial and residential development. Section 11, again, deals with the affordable housing. Again, it's taking the entire policy, putting it into code for conditionally permitted multifamily housing in our planned commercial zoning districts. What the Planning Commission is recommending here is an increase in the buy-in number from 100,000 to 125,000, with a yearly escalator established by the Housing Price Index plus 1%. Stephanie Hawkinson is with us this evening to answer any questions relating to the affordable housing policy as well. And then the last section is the minimum garage stall requirement. Right now, the code requires at least a two-stall, a two-stall garage for single-family and duplexes. This would require the minimum at one stall. So it doesn't prohibit someone from putting in a three-stall garage if they wish, but if they want to do a one-stall garage, this ordinance would allow that. So again, the staff and the Planning Commission are recommending the ordinance as written. But we would suggest this evening, as you hold the public hearing, and again, keep it open until the 12th at noon, and then continue action for second reading on August 18th. And with that, I can stop there and answer any questions.
Questions for Director Teague with respect to this public hearing matter? The proposed changes, Member Brindle?
Thank you. So I'm wondering why, as, okay, I have my technical writing hat on. And the, the rule of thumb is that if you have text that you are going to put into, like, a document such as this, that you put it in once, so that if it changes, there's only one instance that needs to change. And in this, the affordable housing policy text is put in twice that I see. So I'm wondering why multiple times? And then the larger question that I have is, why put it in here at all? If we've got an affordable housing policy, can't we refer to it from the code, rather than put it in the code?
I'll take that, that last question first. That was my very first thought. Could we just refer to the affordable housing policy? And I was advised by our city attorney that we need to put it into code. We can't refer to a policy. So that's the reason that it's, that it is as lengthy.
Okay.
In regard to the multiple areas where the code is written, like the, some of those building standards, we had to write it multiple times because it's in multiple zoning districts. So those, those building standards also apply to not only the planned commercial district, but the planned office district. So that's the reason it's in there multiple times. It's covering each district that those regulations apply.
Okay, so when changes are made to the affordable housing policy, which is now codified in each of the building sections, how easy is it to make changes to that text and make sure you get them all?
We would need to do a zoning ordinance amendment, just like we're doing this evening.
Right, but you'd need to do both sections.
Correct. Yep.
All right, well, somebody has to remember that. So that's, that would be, that would be my worry, is that you'd end up with one that says one thing and one says the other. So that's, that's a real risk, in my opinion.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? I think we've got Attorney Knutson on the, on the line with us as well. Why don't you speak, Attorney Knutson, to the policy versus code issue that Member Brindle raised? We've had an affordable policy, housing policy in effect for a couple of years. We haven't had any difficulty enforcing that policy. It seems like, at least theoretically, it would be easier to amend the policy or change the policy than it is to amend the code, once embedded in the code. Why do we care about having the affordable housing policy embedded in the code?
Because the affordable housing policy is not an ordinance. It's not the law. If someone comes in and wants to do something, if it isn't a PUD, it's a, it's a regular zoning district, you can't enforce that policy unless it's in the ordinance.
Director Teague, you were going to comment as well?
I was. So the way the policy is worded now, it's, the affordable housing policy applies when there's a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment.
Right.
What this does is, it closes that gap for a multifamily project to come in under our existing zoning, where it would be permitted. The policy then applies now because it is part of the code.
Mr. Mayor? I mean, I understand all of that, and I understand why, you know, we would want to have this in our code. The part I'm still not quite understanding is the piece on the opt-out or opt-in fee, whatever we're calling it, why that would be enumerated in this actual code versus, I just kind of felt like it was a little bit more of an HRA-type thing, you know, where we figure out what the, because that, that can probably vary over time, versus having the code element here that sort of allows or clarifies where we can have this affordable housing or encourage.
If I could speak on that. If you don't have that alternative in there, there is no such alternative. Someone could say, here's your ordinance. Says you have to have this.
Member Fisher, were you concerned about the, the proposal involving raising the cost from 100 to 125,000 per door for your affordable housing responsibility in a development project, plus the escalator?
Yeah, I mean, and to me, that's normally an HRA kind of discussion, and we talk about all of those elements in terms of what we're trying to, you know, how we're trying to incent or not incent, or get the affordable housing to happen. Everything about this, you know, the Planning Commission did good work, and a lot of this is kind of stuff you would expect to come into your, your codes from the Planning Commission. That was the one piece that caught me a little off guard, that that's not a normal kind of, kind of thing to come from the Planning Commission to evaluate what the, what the buy-in amount should be for affordable housing. Now, they did some good research, and that's all useful stuff, but I think at some point, this council's got to have a conversation about what we feel comfortable with on that element, you know, that particular piece. And it's not to discount, you know, all the other good work that's been done here.
Thank you, Member Fisher. Member Staunton? Any comment?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Manager Neal?
The one, oh, sorry. Yes, Your Honor, the, the reason, though, that it is, that particular item is a council-related item as it goes to including it in the ordinance is that, is that the council is the regulating body for the development, and we, and we take this, this benefit, this community benefit through the development review process, through the regulatory review process, and the HRA doesn't have a role, doesn't have the same role as a regulator that the City Council does. So that's why it needs to be with the council. The HRA could give, the HRA could give advice to the council on this item, if you wanted to do it like that.
So I have one last question, and that is, what happens to the affordable housing policy that we currently have? Is that now not needed?
No, it's, it's still needed. It comes into play then if there's any kind of a rezoning request or a comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay, so it needs to be updated to reflect the new buy-in amount and escalator?
That's correct. So it's, to your earlier point, anytime we're making an amendment to the policy, we need to make sure we're doing it both in the policy and in the ordinance.
Okay.
Member Anderson, any thoughts?
The only thought I have is that when we, when we move to a different opt-in arrangement without considering it a little more fully, I did see the comparison, and I think that the Planning Commission did good work in comparing our policy against others. And it's pretty clear that ours is something of a value in the development community, if you take a look at that. I remember the conversation at a work session roughly a year ago, and there was a bit of a debate about that amount at that time. And in general, I think we came to the conclusion that the lower amount was better, in that it would tend to attract development proposals. I'm not, whether it's 100 or 125,000, I don't think that's the biggest issue. I think that the fact that we're not really discussing it as fully and considering it as fully as we could, maybe a little breathing room would be better. I would like to, I'd like to consider whether a yearly escalator plus one point, three years down the road or four years down the road, makes us a little bit less competitive in the development universe. I think it's just something to think about. I'm not sure that we should be rushing to that tonight, so, but thank you.
Other thoughts from council members? I join, I think, Member Fisher and certainly Member Anderson in expressing some concern about raising the level of contribution from 100 to 125,000 per obligated unit, especially during this particular period in the economy. I saw those comparative situations. Some of them I thought were somewhat relevant, some I thought were not relevant. When you start talking about, the shortlist at the bottom, I've lost my computer power now, and I can't run two computers, but when you start thinking about obligations, comparing us to obligations in Boston or some other metropolitan areas, or on the West Coast, I just think. or some other metropolitan areas, uh, or on the West Coast, I just think that's, that's, those aren't good comparatives. Um, so I would like to take a little bit more time to think that, uh, think through any potential change in the obligation per door, if you will. Uh, uh, plus the, uh, have a discussion about the escalator because I don't want to, the pandemic's already had a chilling effect on, on development and I don't want to have us uh, miss out on opportunities for some affordable housing by virtue of the fact that we've raised the price of affordable housing beyond the reach of what developers are able to figure out how to do. So I think it, it's, uh, it's tricky work and, uh, and I haven't seen uh, enough analysis on it yet to get me comfortable with just recommending on a first reading basis, the raising of the per-door obligation from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I don't know if other people share that same concern specifically. It sounds like Member Anderson does.
I mean, my thought was just, just to, you know, the fact that we're having a public hearing, we're going to have the opportunity to maybe get some other input. I'm just kind of putting it out there as something that I think, but before this conversation's over with us, we're going to have to really, um, focus in on that a little bit.
Yeah, well, we could, we could look at first reading tonight after we do the public hearing, but, um, I'll, I'll, I'll raise it again then. A Manager Neil, before we go to public hearing. You're back on mute, Manager Neil.
I understand that reasonable people could, can disagree about what that number ought to be. Uh, I think from a, from a procedural standpoint, uh, staff think it's, it's very important to, uh, adopt the ordinance, uh, with, uh, with these provisions in it, um, regardless of what the number is, because we want to make sure we don't miss out on the opportunity, uh, for affordable housing contributions, uh, during this, during, uh, during this time period. We, we, we feel a little bit vulnerable with the current situation and we want to make sure that we, uh, have that ordinance to secure our, our rights to require affordable housing in the future.
Well, I wonder then, can we just have the ordinance match the policy and adopt that on first reading based on the public hearing?
You, you mean in terms of the portion of the existing policy that deals with the, uh,
Buy-in.
Obligation, the buy-in?
Yep.
Yeah, we can do that. It's our choice. We can do that on a first reading basis. But let's, let, let's go to public hearing first. Anybody else have a comment or a question for staff? All right. This is a public hearing matter. Um, let's go to public testimony, uh, on this unless, uh, Director Hawkinson, uh, Manager Hawkinson, do you have anything you wanted to add before we go to public hearing?
Mayor, council members, um, the, you know, the Planning Commission did look and discuss the buy-in amount. Clearly, it needs to be discussed among the council. Um, one of the ideas is it's, um, weighing on whether or not you want the affordable housing units to be included in the development or you want the buy-in funds. And if the dollar amount is lower or lower than really, significantly lower than what it costs to develop an affordable unit, then you're more apt to get the buy-in amount. If you want to increase the profile and the number of affordable units, then you want to add some disincentive to doing the buy-in option by increasing the buy-in amount. So it's, it's a balancing act on whether or not you want the units or whether or not you want the dollars.
Thank you. All right, uh, we're gonna, we're, I'm gonna open this up for public testimony. We're going to hear from residents now who might want to provide testimony in this matter. Again, the number is eight hundred three seven four zero two two one. Conference ID number is seven seven nine seven eight four seven. Remember to press star one so you get to the operator and they'll ask for your name and address and then put you in the queue. And then Director Benarott will bring you forth to speak and you'll have three minutes. Manager Neil is the timer. Director Benarott, let's go to public testimony. Is there anyone in the queue that wishes to speak on this matter?
We currently do not have anyone on the call. I would recommend that we wait a minute or so before moving on as there is a slight delay with the broadcast.
Thank you. Director Benarott, are we ready to go forward? Is there anyone in the queue?
There's no one in the queue just yet. I'm just waiting to, till the clock turns to eight thirty-eight on my machine.
All right. If you think that's an important time marker, we'll wait with you.
Now, eight thirty-eight, it's been a full minute. I think you can move on.
All right, thank you. All right, um, well, let's, before we entertain a motion to grant first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, let's finish up this discussion on the, uh, buy-in number. And then that might drive what the, uh, uh, first reading uh, language looks like in part. Member Brindle, you had indicated that you might be wanting to recommend that, uh, in conjunction with granting first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, that we modify that language, uh, where it's recommended at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per obligated unit plus an escalator, uh, to just keep that at, that the current affordable housing policy level of one hundred thousand dollars per door, if you will, uh, on that obligation. Do you want to speak to that further?
Well, I, I guess it, what, my concern with it is every time we've changed or amended the affordable housing policy, it has been something that we've worked through and, and spent time with. We haven't spent any time with this. Um, we considered it at one point. We had a very similar discussion to the one we had tonight about whether to raise it to a hundred twenty-five or to leave it at a hundred. And here now we are getting an amendment for us to either push forward or keep as, as is. So I would suggest that since we have not discussed this and we haven't discussed the escalator and what that means over time, uh, referring to Member Anderson's comment about at what point does that become, um, burdensome? And we lose a developer, for example, um, that we take time to discuss it and, and make the amendment based on what we feel is right rather than accepting something we haven't spent time with. So I, I guess I would be most comfortable with, if we're going to codify the policy in the ordinance, I would be most comfortable codifying the current policy as it stands.
All right, other comments from council members? Member Anderson? Uh, you're, you're off mute, I see.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I guess I concur with Member Brindle. I, you know, it's the, it's the unknown really as we look forward. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that the, the, the COVID restrictions that we see and the economic questions that we have going forward, I don't frankly feel like they're going to be fully realized for a year or two. Um, and I, I don't know, it may be that the housing index will actually, the housing price index may actually decline. That's, that's possible. So this may not, this may not be the detriment that we think. I just don't really like the idea of an open-ended index that goes on plus one percent on an annual basis, uh, you know, it's kind of like, uh, accrued interest. And I, I think we could get to a point where we are less desirable. I also think that if the lines cross here in the next couple of years, uh, we may find that there may be other communities who want to be more competitive to attract development. And I, I think that we, um, we want to, we want to be in the mix always. Um, now, if we had a flat number, uh, to, to Director Hawkinson's point, if we had a flat number, I might be a little more comfortable with that. If we, if we decided after discussion that a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is an appropriate amount and that we remain competitive with that, that might be something to consider. Um, but it's just the, the questions that surround, at least to me, the housing price index and the escalator that goes with it. I, I think we need a little more time to come to that. So if it remains at a hundred thousand in the short term, there, there's really, we're really looking at, at two different issues in here. Introducing, uh, and maintaining our affordable housing policy into developments that occur within a commercially zoned district. And then the second step here is really the amount of the, of the, uh, of the buy-in. So I, I think it's okay to defer that, um, for a bit while we, while we ruminate. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Fisher? Did we lose him? Possibly.
We did.
Members, I see, I don't see him. Looks like we lost him. Member Stotan, any thoughts on this issue?
Well, I'd like to wait until we get the public hearing closed and if we've gotten any more information from the public hearing and, so I don't care what we do for the first draft on the topic, but we should discuss it in more depth at the second draft. That'll give us a chance to hear from everybody and, and make a decision at the second reading.
All right, um, well, one option would be to grant first reading of ordinance twenty twenty ten as proposed and close the public hearing at noon on August twelfth. Uh, or we could modify the proposed language of ordinance twenty twenty dash ten to fix, uh, the amount of the buy-in at its present level as stated in the affordable housing policy and close the public hearing at noon on August twelfth. Do that on a first reading basis. Um, somebody care to make a motion and we'll, uh, to close the public hearing and, and, and then move one of those two pathways and then we'll have a discussion.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we close, we sus- suspend or close the public hearing until August twelfth and that we waive first reading of the ordinance as drafted.
All right. Is there a second on that motion?
Um, sure, second.
All right, we've got a motion that is second to, uh, grant first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as proposed and close the public hearing at noon on August twelfth. Discussion.
I, um, so as drafted, does that mean it's going to say a hundred thousand or does that mean it's going to stay with the hundred twenty-five plus the escalator?
Means as drafted.
What?
It means as drafted. As drafted, what is in the document in front of us this evening?
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I have a question procedurally, since this is a public hearing on this. If, if we decide, um, as we come back for a vote on this on the eighteenth, now, because it's a public hearing matter, if we change the language here or decide that we want to go in a different direction, is that will that require a second public hearing on that matter? Mr. Knutson?
Yep.
No?
No.
Okay, right.
Okay. So, yeah, to your, to your question, Member Anderson, we could, we could adopt the, uh, we could pass the motion as suggested by Member Stotan and continue the action for voting on August eighteenth. But if we decided between now and August eighteenth or on August eighteenth that we, uh, that, that the motion, we could move to second reading with a, uh, an amendment that would, uh, or a change that would, uh, leave us at the existing affordable policy level of a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
But at least we'd get on to phase two and we could change it then.
Okay.
Or, or as you suggested and Member Brindle suggested, which I think is wise, that we could, uh, leave it as is and then study it and, and always amend it later on to, to move it up either with a fixed cost or a fixed cost with an escalator.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got a motion to grant first reading, uh, of ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten, close the public hearing at noon on August twelfth and continue the action on the item to the August eighteenth city council meeting. That was your motion, Member Stotan?
Correct.
All right, is there a second? We had a second from Member Brindle.
Yep.
Uh, any further discussion? Roll call please, Ms. Allison.
We can't hear you.
You show that you're off mute, but you, doesn't seem like you're off mute. Member, yeah.
It looks like we should hear you.
You're back to mute now.
How about now?
There you are.
Okay, sorry about that. Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Not sure what I'd be voting on.
Ah, I'm sorry, I forgot you were gone for a while.
I trust all of you, but not that much.
So you will be abstaining from this vote?
I think, uh, yeah, let's see how that works.
Um, Member Stotan?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. Uh, all those, uh, who want to abstain from granting first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten and close the public hearing at noon on August twelfth, continue the action on the item to the August eighteenth city council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ma- you want to call roll on, on Member Fisher?
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Fisher abstains.
Abstains.
The motion to grant first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, uh, which also closes the public hearing at noon on August twelfth and continues this matter for action on August eighteenth, uh, is approved. All right, we're going to move on from the public hearing portion of the agenda now to reports and recommendations. The first matter in front of us this evening there is item eight A, which is, uh, potential approval of the drainage right-of-way easement vacation at six thousand Fox Middle Lane. This has been in front of us before. Director Milner has this matter.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, if you recall at the last meeting, we didn't receive any, uh, public testimony and since then, we did, we also did not receive any public testimony. So we're asking the council to approve the resolution, um, to vacate that drainage and utility easement contingent on that property giving us new easements, which is embodied in that resolution. I'll stand for any other questions at this time.
Any other questions for Director Milner? Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-six which would approve the drainage right-of-way easement vacation at six thousand Fox Middle Lane with the conditions, uh, embodied in that, uh, resolution? Yeah, motion by Member Stotan, second by Member Fisher. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Stotan?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. Motion's approved. Resolution's adopted. Uh, next matter Director Milner has as well and this is the potential approval of the drainage right-of-way easement vacation at forty-eight oh five Sunny Slope Road. Director Milner?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, the resolution number twenty twenty dash seventy-eight. Also didn't receive any feedback at the previous council meeting or on the Better Together website. Staff would recommend approval of this vacation contingent on getting new easements, which the owner is providing. Uh, we would stand, I'd stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner on item eight C, no, eight B. All right, is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-eight which would approve the drainage right-of-way easement vacation at forty-eight oh five Sunny Slope Road? right-of-way easement vacation at 4805 Sunny Slope Road?
So moved.
Moved by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye. Uh, item 8C was in front of us, uh, for a public hearing, uh, a while back, and that is a grant of second reading for zoning ordinance amendment allowing taprooms, wineries, distilleries, and cocktail rooms in POD 2 of the planned office district. Director Teague has this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, as you recall, this is, this would allow those uses, uh, as just read, in the POD 2 district, primarily located adjacent to our industrial, uh, properties, 70th and Cahill area, largest area along Highway 100, and there's one spot over by Pentagon Park. The, the purpose of the request was for the applicant who would like to put in a distillery at 7201 Metro Boulevard. He is, uh, Eric Anderson, and he is on the call with us this evening, should you have any questions. Uh, but with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending that you adopt the ordinance on second reading.
All right, thank you, Director Teague. Any questions for Director Teague or Mr. Anderson? We had a pretty thorough presentation on this last time when we granted first reading. Is there a motion to grant second reading of ordinance 2020-09, uh, for zoning ordinance amendment allowing taprooms, wineries, distilleries, and cocktail rooms in the POD 2 Planned Office District, uh, Planned Office District? Are there motions?
So moved.
Second by Member Brindle, motion by Member Fisher. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Anderson, Member, Anderson? Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye. Uh, the motion's approved, uh, with respect to ordinance, uh, 2020-09 and the amendment there, which would allow taprooms, wineries, distilleries, and cocktail rooms in POD 2 Planned Office District. Thank you. Thank you, Member Anderson, or Mr. Anderson for being with us. And Member Anderson, thanks for being with us too. Mr. EJ Anderson, Mr. EJ Anderson, thank you for being with us.
Yes, thank, thank, thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, city council, uh, members, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. The next matter Director Teague has, which is resolution 2020-74, uh, potential issuance of a conditional use permit with variances for 4425 Valley View Road.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this was, is the project at the, uh, in the, uh, Valley View Wood, uh, Valley View Wooddale area where the applicant's proposing to tear down the Old New Horizon daycare facility that's been vacant for quite some time and build 21, a 21-unit apartment. Um, as mentioned, conditional use permit with variances are requested here. The planning commission, uh, vote for the, for their recommendation was four to two, and the issue for the two that didn't support the project centered around the conditions of approval. They didn't believe that the conditions that were made in the motion could be met, and we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. Um, staff has worked with the applicant, uh, to revise that condition to one that's, that is a little bit more workable and that we think does get at the root of the issue for, um, for the planning commission. And that is the condition number nine, and that is that the applicant shall provide signage to direct delivery or short-term parking, uh, on the site. Uh, staff and the transportation commission will review the impacts of off-street versus on-street bicycle facilities adjacent to the site, and staff will review those opportunities for implementation along the entire corridor. Part of the condition was they wanted a physical barrier, um, separating traffic from cars, um, or, uh, separating traffic from the bike lane, which really isn't possible, um, with the shared, um, bike lane arrangement. Uh, so with that, again, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, um, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your resolution. And we do have the applicants with us this evening also to answer any questions you may want.
All right. Any questions for Director Teague or for the applicants, from council members? Otherwise, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2020-74, which would approve issuance of a conditional use permit on the described property. There a motion to that effect?
Some moved.
All right, Members Staunton, always, Member Brindle, yeah, I think you seconded or did, you were on mute there for a moment.
I was.
Are you seconding?
Sure.
Okay, or Member Fisher will do it if you don't want to. All right, we got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Brindle. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call please with respect to the potential adoption of resolution 2020-74.
Member Anderson? Did you respond, Member Anderson? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Member Anderson? Doesn't look like you're running.
No, I'm, I'm clear and hung.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye. Uh, resolution 2020, uh, dash 74 approving the conditional use permit for the described property is approved. And, uh, Mr. DeVolus, Mr. Margulies, thanks for being with us this evening, and, um, appreciate you, uh, sticking with us through the meeting. This will be a terrific project for that neighborhood.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for your support.
All right, thank you. And, uh, then, uh, resolution 2020-80 implementing the 2018 comprehensive plan update. Manager Neal wanted that table to, uh, our August 18th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Member Brindle moves, uh, and Member Fisher seconds. Um, any further discussion? Roll call please, Ms. Allison.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Mr. Mayor, what's the motion?
The motion is to, uh, is to table, uh, resolution 2020-80, that's, uh, item 8E to the August 18th meeting.
Thank you.
Going to the request of manager Neal. Okay. Got a motion, is, can, uh, any further discussion? Roll call please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye. Uh, it, motion passes, the matter's table to August 18th. And then item F, which is, uh, Manager Neal, it's the amendment to divide building permits into two classes and reduce percents of hours of construction in each class.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I think council members have, have discussed this, uh, concept off and on over the years of how do we provide relief to, uh, to residents who feel like there's a construction, uh, project working, uh, next door to them or in their neighborhood or, or impacting them every day of the week. And our, i- it's not, uh, it, it is not frivolous, uh, when you think of the kind of noise and disruption that, uh, some of these large, uh, construction projects in our community, uh, can be capable of. And so we've had off and on discussions with them. We had a, a, a council discussion on this topic in 2013. Um, and really one of the subjects that came, uh, out of that discussion was how do we restrict, uh, how do we restrict days and hours of construction yet not impact a, a homeowner's, uh, ability to build a deck if that's what they wanted to do? And so that, that discussion, uh, made some marginal changes to our ordinance, but what we're proposing tonight is to, uh, introduce a new factor into this discussion, and that is, uh, a proxy, uh, a proxy value for, for noise. And that, that proxy value is the size of the construction project. So what we're trying to, to put together here is essentially two classes of, of construction projects with two different, uh, abilities to make noise or, or abilities to, uh, work on the project and therefore make noise. And, and so that's what we have in front of you tonight. This is the first time, uh, this has been in front of the council. What we're proposing, uh, is for you to adopt this on first reading. Uh, we would then, uh, share this with, uh, with the construction community, get some feedback on it, but, but by adopting it on first reading, they have a clear understanding in the, uh, of, of, of the direction that this is going, uh, and we may or may not bring changes back to you, uh, for the second, for the second reading that happens later this month or in September. Uh, but that's what we'd like, uh, to ask you to do tonight. Um, I do have, uh, an amendment though that I would like to ask the council to make to, uh, what's in front of you and, but I, whenever the, whenever the right time, uh, to do that is, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Why don't you tell us a little bit about the, what the proposed amendment is and then we can go to questions for you?
Sure, sure. Uh, I had this discussion with Councilmember Fisher today and also with Dave Fisher, who is our building official. The nomenclature that we use is, is important, uh, in this discussion, uh, because it impacts our, our, our compliance and really our, our ability to enforce it at the building permit level and at the police department level, because that's ultimately who comes out in off-hour situation. The current language says for projects with building, with a building permit of twenty-five thousand dollars or less, for projects with a building permit, uh, more than twenty-five thousand dollars. That kind of implies that we're regulating the, these projects by the size of the building permit itself, and a twenty-five thousand dollar building permit is, is a large building permit in a DINA. It probably would regulate less than five percent of our projects. What we would propose, uh, to change that particular language to is for projects requiring a building permit with a building project value of fifty thousand dollars or less and then another category of fifty thousand dollars or more. That language specifically targets the value of the project, which again is a proxy for the size of the project, which is a proxy for how much noise it's going to create. So, uh, that fifty thousand dollar figure, uh, really is, is, would capture, we think, uh, most of the projects, uh, uh, that, that we're trying to capture and trying to reduce the amount of time, uh, that they can be under construction.
All right, thank you for that clarification and that, uh, discussion, uh, on the proposed, uh, first reading of the ordinance 2020-11. Uh, questions or comments by council members with regard to this direction?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Member Staunton?
Um, so one of the things about the paradox about this is that the starting time and the finishing time are almost by definition outside of normal working hours. And I'm wondering if you can give us any sense of how we go about enforcing this, because I have talked to some folks who've been frustrated with the lack of enforcement and partially because it ends up being the police department on weekends or early mornings or late evenings and, and are they issuing tickets? Um, and ultimately, I'm, I'm wondering if maybe this is the kind of thing that we could add dollars to our escrow on the general contractor so that we could put the general contractor under some more pressure to get the subs to comply?
Yeah. Uh, council member Staunton, members of council, uh, how it's enforced, uh, is, is a question that, and most of, most of the off-hour time, uh, is enforced by a, a police officer. What happens in those cases is that a police report is generated and it is shared with the building department, and the building department has an administrative fine procedure what, that they do charge against the existing escrow that we hold on these projects. So that's how, that there is a, there is a financial component to this that already exists, um, and that's, so that, that mechanism we would say wouldn't change in this new process.
So the, so, and, and what is that, is the, there an escalating scale as part of that administrative system?
Yes.
Because I think one of the other issues becomes the, you know, our officers go out there, tell them to knock it off, and then they leave, and then 20 minutes later, back at it, and it becomes a whack-a-mole game.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, we, I talked about that with, uh, David Fisher today, and I, I think what we want to do internally with their own system is escalate it so that they can, uh, red-tag a project if they have too much, uh, too much regulatory non-compliance, because we don't really do that right now, uh, but I think that's ultimately going to be what we need to do, because in, in some of these cases, time, uh, the time is a lot more valuable than the money that we're charging them, it seems.
Right, and, and I do think putting some pressure on the general contractor who's on the building permit is the right answer, because otherwise the subs end up, nobody's accountable.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. So if I read, the way I read this, with the edited version where the project value is fifty thousand or less, or more than fifty thousand, um, this only relates to projects that require a building permit.
That's right.
Okay, so if a, if a resident is going to do something and it doesn't require a building permit, they just have to comply by the noise ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, and most of the complaints that have come in, um, that lead to this kind of an ordinance change are those that, they're huge projects, they're tear-down rebuild, they are whole-house remodel that take a long time and with lots of trucks and lots of deliveries. So, um, so I guess I'm wondering, um, why, why two categories when really it's the one that generates mo- most if not all the complaints that I'm aware of?
Uh, why two categories? Because we are proposing to, uh, reduce the days and times available in general. We're, we're, we're trying to reduce the whole thing, and then for the larger projects, reduce it again even smaller.
Okay, well, I, how many, I guess how many complaints do we get about the smaller projects? I really only hear about the big projects.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have that data.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, I mean, I have no problem with the concept. I have no problem with the concept. Um, as I see it, the, the part of this that, that really needs the teeth is the second part, and that's the part that needs the teeth. Um, it's, uh, you know, I, going along with this is the, uh, the rules of the game that, um, I forget what it's even called. What's it, what, what is that construction, um, practices that, that builders have to comply by, like park only on one side of the street, that kind of thing? So the...
Or construction management, uh...
Yes, yes.
Practices and policies.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So I, I mean, that's, that's how this hit me is, hmm, it's really the big projects that, that generate the complaints in, in my mind, but I have no, I have no problem with trying to, a two-tier approach, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would just say that, you know, we don't, we don't get a lot of complaints because it's your neighbor. People, as a rule, are going to go talk to their neighbor, they're not going to complain about it, they're going to work out whatever they work out. I think this is really about, you know, and, and I, and I'm actually impressed by, this is a creative solution, because the struggle we've had all along is everyone wants the, the commercial construction noise to be more limited, but nobody wants to be told what to do in their own backyard, building their own deck, or doing whatever their home projects are, and that's understandable, I mean, people have limited time to do that. And I think this kind of gets us pretty close to managing that in a fair way.
Okay.
So I definitely think it's worth trying.
Yeah. When would it be effective?
Uh, following the publication after the second reading of the ordinance, so sometime in September most likely.
Oh, so pretty right away. Okay, great.
So how would you, uh, go about characterizing the, uh, specific... So how would you, uh, go about characterizing the, uh, specific language that you want to amend to create project, the distinction between project value 50,000 or less, or more than 50,000?
So the language that I would like to substitute for the first line in each one of those sections, Mr. Mayor, is, um, in the first section, I would like to sub, I would propose to substitute the language, uh, as follows. For projects requiring a building permit with a building project value of $50,000 or less, and then the second one would be for projects requiring a building permit with a building project value of more than $50,000.
Okay.
All right.
The other provisions would stay the same.
All right. Anybody have, uh, thoughts or questions on the, uh, questions on the proposed amendment? We can take that, we can take that first. Uh, so with respect to the, uh, language in the first line that would deal with, uh, uh, creating project value 50,000 or less, uh, or more than 50,000, is there a motion to adopt that language?
So moved.
On an amended basis?
Second.
Motion second to amend, uh, ordinance 2020-11, uh, first line to, uh, designate proj, designate, uh, values, designate the mechanism of, um, division, uh, as between project values 50,000 or less, or more than 50,000. Any further discussion? All right, we're going to vote on adoption of the amendment. Ms. Allison?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle? Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye.
Now, is there a motion to approve first reading of amended ordinance 2020-11 to divide building permits into two classes and reduce permissible hours of construction in each class?
Salute. Second.
A motion second on that matter. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor? Can I just, can I just, uh, add on, tack onto that, just a request, um, to Manager Neil to bring back, when we come back with the second reading, uh, any additional information on this enforcement, um, administrative fine protocol and how we're kind of tightening that up?
Good thought. All right. And then, Manager Neil, how much time do you think you'll need to engage the, uh, building community to get their comments before you come back for a second reading?
We've already started that process. So probably just a week.
All right. Very good.
They're not going to like it.
All right. We're on to, uh, correspondence. We're on to correspondence and petitions. Anything, uh, has anything come in other than what we have received electronically?
No, it hasn't.
Okay. Aviation noise update, Member Brindle?
Thank you. Uh, the next noise oversight committee meeting is Wednesday, September 16th at 1:30. Um, I don't know yet if it's a, if it's going to be a phone-in meeting, or if it's going to be an in-person meeting. Lately, we've been, uh, we've been, uh, on the phone, uh, dialing in, so, uh, but the next time we meet is the third, Thursday, third Wednesday of September at 1:30.
All right. Thank you. Manager Neil, anything supplemental on aviation noise?
Nothing more to add to that.
All right. And then Mayor and Council comments, uh, portion of the agenda, Member Staunton, you want to lead us off? Anything?
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Member Brindle?
I got a couple of things. Um, following up on the 57th and Beard discussion tonight, um, I would love to see, uh, a higher priority on, um, on rolling stops at stop signs and, um, and having officers at least educate drivers, uh, if not ticket drivers at stop signs, and the, I think the, it, it's, it's bad anywhere, but it's certainly bad in, at a park where you've got kids around and people are rolling through stops. So, so I would like to see some, uh, some improvement there in, um, in traffic control and, um, anyway, citations. And then, um, so we've been approached by the Highway 169 Corridor Coalition to reinstate our membership as a, as a city member of that coalition, and, um, it's my understanding that we are doing that, and I don't know the meeting schedule yet, but, um, so when, when we get notice of the meeting schedule, uh, it's being chaired by Kevin Burke, who is a city council member in Prior Lake, and so we should designate someone, whether it's a staff person or a council person, or both, to, um, to attend those meetings. And then, uh, the only other thing is that I have continued to participate in listening sessions, uh, around the city, uh, deal in, and in conversations about anti-racism and understanding where we are and who we are and, um, and what actions we ourselves can take to educate ourselves and just be a more caring community. So that's what I have.
I've got a question for you as well, Member Brindle. I had a voicemail from, uh, Brad Aho, uh, from Eden Prairie City Council, who's running for county commissioner, and, uh, he said rotationally on the 494 Corridor Commission, Edina was up next, and you, of course, for them would be the chair, but, uh, you, you, uh, are not running for reelection.
That's right.
So I'm wondering if we should just, you know, what are your thoughts on that? Should we just jump by Edina? Because somebody who comes on 494, if it's not me, and I, I won't have time to do it, uh, they won't know, they won't know what, uh, the work of the 494 Corridor Commission is, so we should just jump by Edina? Do you want to let them know that and go to the next?
Yeah, we've, actually, we did talk about this. So the next city alphabetically is Minnetonka, I believe, and so it's Eden Prairie, it's Edina, it's Minnetonka, it's Richfield, and it's Bloomington. So alphabetically, we jumped to Minnetonka. But yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be a heavy lift for someone who has not served on that commission. Um, you've got, you know, you've got the Metropolitan Council, you've got, um, the Transit, uh, you've got, um, Senator, um, Steve Elkins, uh, Representative Elkins, uh, you, I mean, it's a, it's, there's, there's a lot there, and, uh, it's a great committee, wonderful people and good work, and so, but it would be a heavy lift for someone who hasn't been involved.
Yep. All right. So I, I would.
Yeah, I will communicate.
Our colleagues are comfortable, I think we just recommend to Member Brindle that we, uh, pass on, uh, uh, being chair.
Yep.
Particular period and let it go to Minnetonka.
Yep.
Okay. I'm assuming that there's somebody from Minnetonka on the 494 Corridor, uh, Commission that's active.
Julie Wishneck.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, she'll be good.
She'll be good.
All right. Good. Uh, Member Anderson?
Yes, sir. I actually have a couple of things, one of which, um, would be, uh, I'd like some feedback on, um, Jan Seidman and I, uh, along with, uh, MJ Lamon, the facilitator, interviewed, uh, yesterday and on the 29th, 52 student commissioners or potential student commissioners. Um, that's the largest group that has ever thrown their hat in the ring. I think the reason for that is, is that if, these kids have had so many COVID limitations, there are fewer activities, uh, available to them, some sports are canceled, some seasons are flip-flopped, um, and, eh, so, um, the talent in this group is phenomenal. I, I, it's, it's actually, it's moving how bright and intelligent and committed with such a clear vision of the future that so many of these kids have. It's, it's very refreshing. They're very idealistic and they're really looking forward, and each of them wants to be a part of the community and wants to be involved in service. With that number of applicants and with the level of talent, um, it was suggested, and I want to bring this to you for consideration, it was suggested that rather than two student commissioners on each commission for one year only, that we named three to seven of the commissions with the exception of planning, um, only two there. Um, they are quite excellent candidates, and the general feeling is, is that because these meetings are virtual until some unknown date, that, um, the, uh, the chairs could handle the additional input, and, um, so I just would like some feedback on that before, uh, MJ, uh, informs the, uh, the new commissioners.
I think that would require an ordinance change.
Does it? Code?
Think so. I think we're, I think those, the, the number of student commissioners are set by code.
That's my recollection, Mayor.
And so, uh, what would be the timing on changing the code? How long would that take?
One meeting?
One, yeah.
One reading.
Yeah, we could wait second reading.
Wait a second reading.
The 18th. Um, what was the thinking, Member Anderson, with regard to composition, uh, on the various boards of commission, with the exception of the planning commission?
Um, it's just the fact that there were so many qualified candidates out of these 52, um, and it seemed as if, uh, the number of, of, uh, 16 wouldn't include enough of these young people. Um, frankly, there probably wouldn't be as many candidates were it not this year. The COVID restrictions and considerations that come out of that are impacting. Um, and the suggestion is for one year only, so it would be actually, I guess, a, a code change that would be effective only for one year.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I, I, I think it's a really good idea, but, um, I, my question is, um, just anticipating if at some point, let's say, you know, early next year, we actually have in-person meetings, and again, who knows? Can we, can we make that work physically, um, with the size of those commissions, and if there were three students sitting up at the dais?
It's a, it's a fair question. I, you know, there are some considerations within, uh, within the concept, and I, I, there was not adequate time to poll the commission chairs to get some input from them, um, but, um, I thought it best to bring it to you for consideration this evening, and if there's some feeling that this is maybe something that we want to try to do for one year, then we begin to take other actions.
Manager Neil?
That's, that's a fair question.
Yeah. I, I think the answer to that question, uh, in, in most cases is that we would not have, particularly if we have to, if we are still in a situation where we're, where we are live, but we are social distancing at the same time, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have enough room around, uh, uh, the dais as currently, um, as currently structured. You know, we might have to move people down to those next levels, or we might have to set them up in front. We may have to do some different things, um, given, given anticipated, uh, parameters for us, but that's, those are, those are some ways we could address that if we, if we are back to live meetings at some point.
Now, one thing we could do, just, this is just brainstorming here, is that you could, and oftentimes we have, um, when we're picking commission members, we have, um, some alternates in case something happens. So let's say you pick your two for each commission, and then you pick your alternate, and then we, and I don't even know how much we'd have to change in terms of the, the ordinance with this, but you, during this COVID time, when we're working remotely, the alternates actually join the meetings, but it's an understanding that if we're back in to, um, physical space, uh, that the alternates would then be alternates again. And so you just kind of have a little bit of a hybrid, give some people an opportunity, because clearly the talent's there and the interest is there. It's a good way to get them involved.
Mm-hmm.
So in looking at where the commissions meet, how many meet at the dais? The, the park board does and planning. How many others meet in the council chambers?
Just those two, Councilmember Brindle.
Okay. And the others meet up in the community rooms?
Sometimes in the mayor's conference room.
In the mayor's, mayor's conference room.
They would all be upstairs.
Can I make a suggestion? How about if we did, how about if we did an ordinance that said that we could appoint up, up to three to each commission, and then work with each commission to figure out what's the right number for them in any given circumstance?
Sure.
What about the, uh, right now, I think regardless of the composition in terms of numbers of each commission, it's an odd number. This puts us at even numbers, doesn't it?
If they don't vote.
They don't vote, though.
If they don't vote.
Oh, I thought they did.
Nope.
Okay.
They did once. They, they did in the past, and we changed that.
When we went from one to two, we may have decided that they shouldn't vote. It would have been, because we used to have one student member per commission.
Right.
Then it may have been a situation where they did vote. Okay.
Um, I like, I mean, I like the idea, yeah, I like the idea, I mean, to have that many students that are interested, if there's a way to, to make that work. Another thing to keep in mind is that, uh, at some point, if we feel like we're going to bring commissions back, uh, and there's not a vaccine, it's very likely we're going to be meeting in places like the public works, uh, building space, with much bigger space, much more spread out, you know, so you work that kind of stuff out, and, uh, but, but I think sticking to an idea where you, you know, there's an understanding that if we get back into physical spaces, you know, maybe the alternate doesn't, at that point, uh, participate.
What about Member Staunton's idea?
I like it.
Yeah.
Look, it's a solid approach.
Think so.
Do you need a motion on that? Manager Neil?
Yes, and, and then, uh, we'll, we'll prepare an ordinance to, to, that reflects that motion.
All right. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on Member Staunton's motion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Havelin?
Aye.
And my, I, I'd just chime in with my thanks to Member Anderson for his work on doing all those interviews there. Sounds like they're terrific young people and.
Really, it was so much fun. It's, it's, you know, usually the kids I talk to are related to, so, for instance, it's fun to see the rest of them.
Well, it gives you, it gives you a good feeling about the next generation, that we are in really good hands.
These, these.
Yeah.
So many of these kids are just brilliant. I, it's, um, it's, it's refreshing. Um, I have another item, uh, and this, I don't quite, uh, Alice Holbert, uh, sent me a long text yesterday, and, um, she was expressing concern about, um, the number of gatherings and the intensity of the gatherings that we're seeing in our town, um, at this time. I, I want to pull out some of her best thoughts here. Uh, basically, she references graduation parties, although I think that there are others, uh, it's not just our neighborhood, all over the city, almost like they're competing each other for who has the most attendees and food trucks, and she goes on to say that in, during her tenure. And she goes on to say that in, during her tenure, uh, she was reluctant to accept complaints without solutions. And so, um, she also goes on to say that, that, um, it's evident that, that the parties are not being limited to twenty-five or less. Um, and so she's suggesting a party permit for, uh, for gatherings of more than fifteen people. That would be, um, evident, I guess indoors as well. No fee for a permit, but one thousand dollar fine if you don't apply for one. Food truck vendors would also be required to pull a permit, large fines if they don't. Um, after all, we're required to get a permit for recreational fires, so getting a permit to hold a viral fire should be reasonable. Um, so I, I think she's expressing concerns here. I, I, I won't go through the whole text, but she's expressing concerns about gatherings in this time, which seem to be large, and we've also seen bar closings in Minneapolis. We're seeing, um, quite a bit of governance and consideration going into the kinds of gatherings where transmission is, uh, is easier. So, um, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, I, I think, uh, her thinking is, is, um, on track. There's probably a large number of people who would agree with her. At the same time, we recognize that this has been a difficult year, especially for graduating seniors, and those kinds of parties are some form of celebration. Uh, and I know we want to be sensitive to that as well. So, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm mentioning it out of respect, uh, for her and her service, as well as the, the, uh, valid points of her consideration.
Uh, Mr. Knutson or Manager Neil, with respect to the governor's, uh, order that's in place, that's applicable to gatherings, uh, of twenty-five or less, uh, or the consequences of gatherings that exceed the, the, uh, amount permitted under the executive order, are there enforcement mechanisms in place already? You're on mute. Roger.
Governor's order is enforceable by law.
And what are the, uh, what are the penalty provisions in the governor's order for violation of the, uh, gathering?
I'd have to check. I, I think it's, is it, I think there's a, a fine and some, and potential jail time.
So it's a matter of reporting it to, what, our local police department?
You could do that if they're in violation of the governor's order. His latest order only covered wearing face, face coverings.
Yeah, it was a prior order, I think.
Yeah, well, I'd have to check that.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that. I, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to, to the PD to find out what they have gotten in the way of complaints. Um, I'll do that.
I think that's a good first step. And, Mr. Knutson, you want to find the applicable, uh, executive order?
I will do that.
Let us know what the enforcement mechanisms are and, and maybe, uh, Member Anderson can share with, uh, Alice Holbert. Yeah, we, we can have a discussion as to whether or not we need to have something that is stricter than what the governor has provided. I think that's permitted in all of his executive orders, is that cities can be more restrictive than his order. That, that's permitted, but, um, as I recall. Is that a, is that a decent next step, Member Anderson?
I think it is. I, um, she, she expressed deep concerns and, um, I'm sensitive to her concerns and wanted to make sure we considered that.
Okay. I think it would be good to find out about enforcement, uh, in our community anyway, so I think that this will be an impetus for that.
Yep.
Okay. Member Fisher, anything tonight? Member Anderson?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Member Fisher, nothing for you?
Nope.
Um, I've had several calls over the past few weeks from people that were concerned about, um, the composting issue, you know, they don't have room for the composting bin, there's only two people in the household, they don't, they, they, they're rarely home, and I know that we have, uh, uh, we've taken the position that everybody in town, like recycling, is going to pay for composting, and they don't have to participate in the program, but they're still going to pay for it. Uh, and we've been able to tell people if they don't want to have their compost bin tell us and we'll get it picked up by Vircan. Uh, and I'm wondering whether any, internally, uh, you're getting a lot of these types of calls, Manager Neil, and whether any consideration has been given to reducing fees for people that don't want to participate in composting, and, and if so, what's, what's the potential consequence of that? Because we wanted, we wanted to be encouraging composting, and I know there's a lot of that, uh, encouragement, uh, online, at least that's what I'm told from folks that are on Nextdoor and other social media sites, that, uh, there's a debate back and forth, but there's a lot of composting proponents out there. Any, any current, you know, give me your current thinking or what, what kind of information we're getting.
Sure.
On that issue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes. Um, I would say, uh, the complaints, uh, that we've been receiving on, uh, the organics recycling program have, have really decreased, uh, significantly, uh, over the, over the summer, right? We still get some, uh, but, but, uh, the program is getting established now, showing some success, people are learning how to do it, and, uh, we're getting much less in terms of complaints than we did, uh, when we first started rolling the cards out. Uh, you asked if we have considered a, some kind of different structure that allows people to opt out without paying. Uh, from a staff perspective, I will tell you, we, we have not. Uh, we understand that that is a common, uh, request. Uh, however, uh, it's our understanding, uh, that the way that this, the way that we have chosen to finance this program is, uh, by a, by a relatively modest fee across a very broad base of, of payers. If you begin to chip away at the, at the, uh, at the width of that base, uh, you either subsidize this with property tax payments, or you increase the monthly fee on people who are participating, um, and, and those have their own set of, you know, negative consequences as well. So, that would take an act of the council, uh, as, as we currently have it established. Uh, we have the broad-based, uh, modest, uh, charge in effect right now for, for everybody, and we use the same standard for, uh, for charging as we do with the, the recycling program, same standard.
Right, you know, the most recent request I got was, would we consider reducing the fee for people who are, uh, not inclined to do composting? And, and I guess the answer is the same, it just, it, it changes the, the number of payers for the service, relies on the users only. Um, and we've adopted this policy of charging everyone whether they wanted the service or not, and I don't know if the council's of a inclination, a little bit post-implementation to revisit that issue, um, or not. I mean, we, in, in light of the policy we have with respect to recycling, it seems like we have everybody paying for that, and every, there's pretty broad acceptance on that, uh, even though there may be some people out there who aren't recycling. So, any thoughts from council members on, on that issue? And, uh, have others had this inquiry of them as well? Member Brindle?
Yes, and certainly we've seen, I think we've all seen the same questions and inquiries, but I think the larger, um, the larger idea for me is education, and that is that the county has goals for us. And we aren't, I mean, we're not charging residents the cost of the recycling program because the county is, it's my understanding anyway, that the county is kicking in, and if we fail to recycle enough, then we won't get the funding to the level that we're currently getting it. And, um, and the county has goals for us to reduce the amount of solid waste that we throw in the landfill, which is why we're doing this. Um, it isn't a program that we would necessarily say, we, you know, here it is, here's your cart, this is something we're doing and you'll be charged for it. If we weren't being told as a city, this is your responsibility, and here are the county goals, and if you don't meet it, it's going to cost you. So I don't, I don't think we've informed the public that there is this larger master plan by Hennepin County for the reduction of solid waste.
I think we did a really good job of informing people through addition to Edina when the program kicked off, but there hasn't been maybe a continuing educational effort, because everybody I talked to is surprised about the requirements of Hennepin County relative to reduction in solid waste. So maybe we could have a, another go-around on the, uh, educational component of it in the water bill or somewhere.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Staunton?
I'm, I'm missing lots of, um, volume here. I don't know, it just cuts out from time to time, but I, I want to give my perspective on this. I think, I think this is absolutely the wrong time to start zigzagging. We're, we're trying to get people used to a program, we should stay the course and not be changing gears here. It's just going to confuse people who are already having to figure out what the new program is. I think we should just stay the course, keep gathering data on how much usage there is, and then we can revisit it in a year or two, but now is not the time.
All right, thought. Yeah, this is, the reason I wanted to raise the issue was to get everybody's thoughts on this. Member Fisher, any thoughts? Member Anderson?
I, I would concur exactly with what Councilmember Staunton just said. Um, you, this, we're just rolling this out, we have to stay the course. This is, this is a tried and true method, we've done it with recycling, um, this is how you get people to sort of get into the program. It's, it's kind of looking at it from the common good perspective. Everyone pays in, and everyone has the same opportunity to take the value out. If they choose not to, that's their own personal choice. We also know that if you use, and, and, you know, I'm not saying it's easy, I mean, we're learning how to do this in our household, we're getting better each week. Uh, and if everyone does that, we're all going to be in a better place. And, you know, what we know already, I can see it in my household, that the garbage is getting less. So yes, we could get a smaller bin at some point and save some money there. Those opportunities are there for everybody. Uh, and my only other comment is, and I'm not one that trolls around on the social media sites very often, but it caught my attention that two or three people were using the terminology that this is taxation without representation, and my only hope is that they didn't go to Edina schools. So, just saying.
Member Anderson?
Um, you know, my only thought on it is, we'd probably relieve a lot of angst if we found a manufacturer made a smaller container for smaller households. But it's, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to fill them, and when I hear that come forward, I say, it probably is hard to fill them, but, you know, that's up to the guy that empties it. That is, that's, that's their problem. If it's, if it's harder to fill, okay. But I, I do, I do hear that, and, uh, actually, I think I was told along the way that Vircan had actually found a manufacturer in Canada who could make a smaller container, so maybe that's somewhere in the system, I don't know.
Yep. All right, thank you. Well, that was a good, uh, good input on that issue. And I'll pass that along to folks as, uh, as I hear from them, but to Member Brindle's point about, uh, further education, we might think about some sort of ongoing educational strategy on a quarterly basis on this issue to encourage this and, as we stay the course, as Member Staunton said. Uh, the other thing I got a call on, uh, Manager Neil, was, uh, uh, our resident, Mr. Kidd down at Pamela Park and Sixty-second, he said there's, uh, there's an area down there near the park entrance that's just turned into a total weed bed, and it used to be maintained by the city as grass, and then we let it go natural, and it's not the right kind of natural. It's not the wildflowers and beautiful wild grasses, it's something that's, uh, creating problems down in the neighborhood from a site standpoint and, uh, uh, others, other ways apparently. Weeds, weeds blowing in, weed, uh, particles blowing in other people's yards, so. Hey, would you take a look at that, please?
So, can you give me the address again?
I just said, was that the entrance of Pamela Park on Sixty-second? And I've got to drive down there as well, I promised him I'd drive down there and take a look. And, let's see. Oh, the, I don't know if we've really solved the problem that, uh, Ralph Zickert raised on Cornelia Circle. You know, I, I walk down there quite a bit to the park, and, and I can see the frustration that they must have down there in that circle where people park in the circle, and they park in a way where you may not even be able to get out of your house if you're on, uh, you know, you're living up on the, on the circle there, so.
Right.
I can see why he continues to tell us we haven't fixed the problem yet, and I, and I think, I tend to agree with him. Now, when I go by there, I have not seen a circumstance like I saw in that photograph where cars are blocking the entire, uh, circle. Uh, it would prevent somebody from getting into or out of their own driveway, but, uh, it certainly looked like that from the photo, that that was a, a potential problem. And I don't know if anybody else has a, an observation on that as well, as to whether we think we've solved that problem. Member Brindle, it sounded like you had a concern.
Well, I, yeah, I brought it up last time, and, um, it is a concern. I did get ahold of Fire Chief Tom Schmitz and said, you know, it, it occurs to me that, uh, an emergency vehicle, a fire truck, would have difficulty getting in here. And he, he said, well, we would find a way to get in there, but you're right. It is, it, it causes difficulty because they are parked across the entire width of the widest part of that circle. And so, um, I don't know if we need to somehow sign it or something that says, you know, resident parking only? Uh, I, I don't know. But, um, but it would be horrible if an emergency occurred and the, the emergency crews, uh, were delayed in getting in there because so many people parked across the width of that circle.
All right, Manager Neil, will you take a look at that again for us?
Yeah.
All right, and then the other thing was, it was raised tonight, but it's been raised several times, and I think you were going to look at this as well or talk to, uh, Perry Vedder about it. Uh, the timing of getting that, uh, field planted or, or put, uh, you know, sod put in in Arden Park. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Uh, the comp, you know, I think that I would start by saying that, uh, the Arden Park project, uh, there's a lot of great aspects of the Arden Park project, and there's a lot of it that I think we would all regard as a success. Uh, one of the aspects of it that we don't regard as a success is, is the turf, uh, the turf and some tree issues, uh, there. And one of the complicating factors behind resolving this, uh, the, the issues in Arden has been that it's a partner, it's a project we're doing with a partner, and, uh, the con, the contract that we have the most concerns about, the turf contract and the tree and some of the tree issues, are held by a contractor who is working for the Waterset District, uh, directly. They hold that contract. So our staff has been, uh, working with the Waterset District and their contractor and their subcontractor, uh, in, in many different ways to try to figure out how to resolve the, the turf issues there. Uh, we're, we're in a period right now from a, from a horticultural standpoint where we're seeding it or even sodding it is really pretty difficult, and it's a, it's a, it's a fifty-fifty game in terms of whether it would survive. Um, so the plan right now is to wait until after August fifteenth, uh, where we cross, uh, we cross a, a, a weather threshold that would allow, uh, would allow the contractor to get back in there and to reestablish turf. Um, that's, uh, that's going to be difficult to do. I think if, if, if we do reestablish it and do some amendment to the soil, we think we can get turf growing there, uh, yet this year, uh, that we'll try, we'll, we're going to need to try to keep kids off of it, uh, which is difficult, other, otherwise we, it won't, uh, it won't sustain. Uh, but that's the, that's the way that, uh, Uh, but that's the, that's the way that, um, the project appears to be resolving right now.
My understanding was that this general contractor that has a contract with the Watershed District doesn't think he needs to put in any topsoil. And the subcontractor thinks they need four, so topsoil before they'll put down the sodder the seed. And, um, it, and, and someone told me that it was clear from the contract between the Watershed District and the general contractor for landscaping that they did have to put down topsoil. And it makes sense that they would have to put down topsoil. Because the soil that's over there, I don't think you could grow much on it. So what's the status of that part of the dispute, if you know? You're back on mute.
Oh, I think Mr. Dentfeldt might have muted me there. Um, yeah, I do think that that is part of the issue here, is a disagreement about contract terms. Uh, I don't think there's much of a disagreement about whether amending the soil, uh, is the right thing to do. It's, it's more, uh, an issue between the contractor and the sub about who's going to pay for that. Yeah, so we are, we're actively trying to help bring these parties together, um, and trying to use our position as, as the property owner to do exactly that.
All right, good. It sounds like you're, uh, uh, doing as well as you can on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're, we're disappointed too. And it's, it's, it, uh, that, that project could have, you know, there was a lot of moving parts in that project. This is one that shouldn't have been the most complicated one, um, and it's turned out that's, that's what happened.
There are so many people down there using that, uh, park now, and it is a beautiful park. And seeing kids in the water in different places, you know, we had that one little swimming hole and one little fishing hole. Now we've got multiple places kids can fish. And, and, uh, in the water all over the place down there, and people, I've seen people, uh, with blankets down there, picnicking, you know, things you never used to see down there, and it's just, uh, it, it's just, you wanted to realize its potential, and so you want to get this problem solved, and then, uh, it will, it will, uh, fully realize its potential and be the true crown jewel it should be. Thank you. That's all I have. Manager Neil?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I have one thing, and it's, it's an important one. Um, we, uh, I think we've talked about this before, uh, that the city receives its property tax levy in, in two large chunks, mostly up kind of 50% in May and 50% later in the year, typically in November or, um, or early December. And one of the things we were concerned about, uh, in 2020 is whether people were going to pay their taxes or not, given the, given what was happening in the economy at the time. Uh, there was concern at the county level that, um, uh, we were going to see significant reductions in, in the amount of property taxes paid, and we were concerned about that as well from a staff standpoint. Um, the county was concerned enough about it that they, they provided, uh, more time for people to make their first half payments. So typically, those first half payments are due May 15th. And, uh, this year, the county pushed that back to July 15th. So, uh, that provided more, that provided taxpayers with more time to pay their taxes. One of the complicating factors, though, for us was it delayed our ability to see what happened, right? Because we really don't, we really didn't get a, uh, a, a very good view of what our collection rate was until just last week. Um, and what we've found is we collected 51% of what we had expected to collect. So, uh, we were expecting to collect 19.8 million, and we collected 20.5 million. So there was a little bit of, of a bump there. Um, there's, it could be a little bit of, of, of discrepancy, it could be rounding, could be people that paid early, could be, but it could be some delinquents that paid from a previous year. Uh, but that's pretty, um, we're pretty, uh, pleased with that, uh, as a collection rate. Um, and we are expecting, we, we are, we are expecting, uh, again, that we should be at the 99% rate, uh, we hope at the end of the year as well.
All right, very good. Good report. Thank you. All right. Um, did that cause anyone on the council to have any other comments? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher to adjourn. Any further discussion? Roll call with respect to the motion to adjourn.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton? Have we lost Member Staunton? We have. Uh, Mayor Hovland?
Again, a super majority anyway. We'll adjourn.